I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees Smith Vocational Agricultural High School. Today is Tuesday, August 15th. Do you have a call to order?
Mr. Kaling?
Present.
Dr. Spencer Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Quadro?
Present.
Dr. Portia Boner?
Present.
And Mayor Ciara is doing in. She walks in, writes with speed. Mayor Ciara's here. No need to run. Thank you.
May we all stand for the voice of allegiance?
The reasons to the flag of the United States of America. In which is written, "Our justice stands one nation in their heart, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
I'm gonna be struggling here. Got my reading glasses. Okay, mission statement, Smith Vocational Agricultural High School is to prepare students for social responsibility, employment, and post-secondary education through rigorous applied technical and academic programs.
Thank you. Excellent. Is there any participation by the public this evening? Hearing no participation by the trustees?
Yeah, I do have a little something to say. Well, first of all, we've had our building committee meeting for our new building. Great conversations going on, really starting to move somewhere. We touched on mechanical systems today, which I thought we had some spirited input on that. And I think all systems need to be evaluated, which we'll get to the bottom of at some point. Lot was said, which it was good. And personally, I am running for reelection to the Board of Trustees, but somehow I will not be on the ballot due to the fact I neglected to pick up my papers and pass them on down the counter to the next office, which I find, that's another story. So I just wanted to go on record that I will be running. I will be having to do a write-in campaign. And that's that.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second, to approve the minutes of the July 18, 2022 Board of Trustees meeting.
Second?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have a superintendent's report?
Anybody? So, to start off, I just want to, you're gonna see the formatting slightly different. I want to thank Dr. Spencer Robinson, working with me over this particular summer, looking at the report, looking at the evaluation system as we talked about a couple of months ago, the different standards that superintendents are evaluated on. And we agreed that the superintendent report, like, shouldn't be modeled to report, well, I'm reporting after the board, let's model it on those four particular standards. So you're gonna see it broken down into those four particular categories. I think it's gonna provide me that framework to make my job easier to report to you as a board. Obviously, then, at the end of the year, it's gonna be a lot easier for myself to provide the evidence to you for the evaluation system. The evidence will be in the reports already. Now, obviously, it'll be easier for you as a trustee. Now, you can go back to previous minutes and see what we talked about around the year, which directly tie back to those four standards. So you're gonna see a slightly different format. With that said, the first standard is the instruction of leadership. Now, over the summer, I also talked about maybe a preview into the school year, the upcoming school year, to give the board sort of a high-level insight of what we're preparing for, how we're preparing for the upcoming school year. So last Tuesday, this was a rescheduled admin retreat. But we were able to come together as a full leadership team, and we spent the day together. The full morning up to lunchtime. We planned for the year, went to a lot of different activities, upcoming events, and so on and so forth. But to kick it off, every year, we talk about a theme. It's a chance as a leadership team to come together, sort of center ourselves around whatever that common theme is gonna be, and then how does that theme then drive throughout the school year. Last couple of years, as examples, coming out of the pandemic, we really felt the pandemic was great. Okay, within quotation marks here at Smith, I think we did a great job as a staff, as admins, students, and family. We really did come together as one unified team to figure out how are we gonna survive through this pandemic, like, how are we gonna educate our students? And we did a great job. But during that two-year span, what really fell by the wayside, that we felt coming out of the pandemic, was getting back to the basics. Okay, we were sort of solving the world's problems and building that plane as we were trying to fly it. Let's get back to the basics, back to the teaching eleven. So a couple of years ago, our theme was back to the basics. Last year, going into last year, I felt we were all stressed out, okay? We know the social-emotional toll of the pandemic really impacted the students, impacted the adults. I think it still is. So last year's theme was relationships. How do we work well together? How do we make sure that the relationships that our students have with one another, along with the staff? How do we rebuild some of those relationships and foster those relationships? So that was last year's theme. This summer, when I was down in the Cape for the MASs conference, the theme that they were really pushing was, what is our why? What is your why? And it's the H-Y, why, what is your purpose? And I played two videos for the leadership team, and I really wanted to maybe step out of the comfort zone and share these two videos with the board, so you can sort of see where the leadership team, what we were focusing on last week. And that's sort of that what versus why video I'm gonna show in a minute. And then the second video is I wanted to show the leadership team my personal why, Andy's why, as the superintendent. And this is sort of the why of all the different seasons of our life, all the different seasons of our professions. Sometimes your why may change, but it's nice to know what your why is. So the first video I'm gonna show okay, really sort of differentiates what your what is versus what your why is. And as I was talking to the leadership team, we all know what our role is, okay? We were hired, the board hired me as a superintendent, the leadership team was hired, for whatever role, whatever lane that they're in. And we have a great team here. And each of them, each of the administrators, they do an outstanding job in that particular lane. So if anybody is asked, what do you do? Well, I'm the superintendent, Joe's the principal. And we know what we do. But why do we do what we do? That's the ultimate question. And if you can really define your why, it makes your what much more, I believe, sort of elevated, clear, people know. And you're gonna see in this particular video what happened to know what your why is.
So how do I know? A lot of people, when they think of the phrase, how do I know, they always wanna put the what behind it. How do I know what I'm supposed to do? The question that you really should ask is, how do I know why I'm here? Because when you know your why, your what becomes more clear and more impactful. If you know, like, for instance, people know that I do comedy, but that's what I do. My why is to inspire people to walk in purpose. So I can do comedy, I can write books, I can be in a movie, because all of it is motivated by my why. In fact, I have a new web series out called Michael Junior Break Time. We probably just did the sixth episode. It's on YouTube. And so every single Wednesday at 3 o'clock, we drop a new episode on YouTube of Michael Junior Break Time. What it is, is it's me, I travel around the country, and I do stand-up comedy, in case you didn't know. And in the middle of my comedy set sometime, I'll stop and just talk to my audience. And we've been filming this, and it's, you know, it's pretty cool. So we're in Winston-Salem. I'm gonna show you a clip from Winston-Salem. And I'm just talking to this guy in the audience, and he tells me that he's a musical instructor at a school. So I was like, alright, you're a musical instructor, you know, can you sing? Let me hear you sing a song. So this is what happened at the last episode of Michael Junior's Break Time. Check it. So you're a musical director?
Yes, sir.
Alright, so let me get a couple, let me get a couple bars of like Amazing Grace. Can you do the first part of that? Go ahead.
Amazing grace, how sweet the sound that saved a wretch like me.
That man could sing. You know what I'm saying? Alright, alright. Now, once you give me the version, is if your uncle just got out of jail, you got shot in the back when you was a kid. I'm just saying, let me see the hood version real quick, if you know which word I'm talking about, just see if that exists. Let me see what you got.
Amazing grace, how sweet the sound that saved a wretch like me. Oh, 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 Lord, but now, right now I'm shy, but blind, but now I see.
Okay, um, here's what I want you to catch. The first time I asked him to sing, he knew what he was doing. The second time, he knew why he was doing. When you know your why, your what becomes more impactful, because you're walking towards or in your purpose.
Thinking about... So we talked about, you know, a brief conversation about that difference there. Okay, we are all great administrators here, we have a great school here, we know what, we know what we're doing. But the more we step into that why, okay, I'll talk about my why in a moment, to get into the second video. I think it's very obvious, you know, as I've been beginning to explore my why over the last couple of years, I've seen individuals, I showed this with the leadership team, I've had teachers come up to me to talk to me about my why, and we truly have some authentic conversations. I, as soon as I was telling the leadership team, there was a student who graduated last year. I always wanted to have a conversation with them, but for whatever reason, we never had the conversation. I wanted to talk to him because his last name happened to be the last name of one of my high school teachers growing up. I wasn't sure if there was a relationship, but we just never had the conversation. So it was the end of the school year, that individual came up to me, introduced himself, and we actually had a conversation that centered on my why. And we had a great conversation, because again, the more we lean into why we're doing what we're doing, and people see that, and pick up on that, and they're drawn to it, which will make our jobs that much better, and more efficient, and it's more successful as administrators. So what is my why?
Was he related to your teacher?
No. He looked definitely like that three years ago. So anyways, this why, I've sort of cued it up. What you're gonna see is sort of a highlight summary of a mission trip that just happened, through my church over to Africa. Okay, so you're gonna see sort of the highlights of that particular trip. I unfortunately did not go on the trip, okay? But you're gonna see somebody in the video, he's actually a teacher that we have here, okay? But what really sparked my interest in this particular video was, the lead-up to this video that happened a couple of weeks ago, I saw through social media a lot of photos that were being taken from people that were on the trip. They were posting pictures on social media, on Facebook, and Instagram, and so on and so forth. And what I saw was, is a slum in Kenya. That's where they're at, okay? It's a really bad slum. And you're gonna see the video. The pain and the suffering and just the, it's just, it's awful, okay? The living environment is awful. There's no way around it. And how could anybody be happy in such an environment? But then you see the joy and the love and the happiness on the kids' faces in the school that you're gonna see. It perplexed me. I couldn't figure out how students, that young, going through hell, basically, how could they be happy in a school? I just couldn't figure it out. And this video really begins to dive into why that happens. And then I actually spoke to Ray, who's our teacher, we'll see him in the video I saw this past weekend. And I asked him, and it shocked me to see how these kids can be so happy in that school, and it's like, Andy, that's the only place to have. They took trips out into the houses, into the slums, literally the slums. He's an electrician by trade, and there's no electricity over there. But anyways, you say, and Andy, like, it's so much despair in the slums, in that community. You have these kids sitting in trash, and urine, and feces, and so on and so forth, and bugs are crawling all over them. There is no joy, there's no smiling, there's nothing in the slums. When those kids get into that school, that's where the smiles come on, that's where that joy is. I see that a lot here at Smith, okay? We have a lot of students who have basically nothing at home, okay? We talk about our student demographics, we talk about the socioeconomic status of a lot of our students. When they come to Smith, they find joy, they find connection, they find an opportunity. And one of our slogans here at Smith is opening doors of opportunity. You're gonna see this school is situated within a mall, okay, and sort of barricades itself outside the slum. And they talk about opening up the door, and the joy that they hear is, and we talk about opening doors for our students. They literally open up the door so that kids can come in. And I think we see that a lot when our students, I have, you know, a couple of kids, I'm not gonna talk about kids here, where they had nothing, they had no hope, they, you know, and they come into a shop break, or they come into the cafeteria, and they sit on the stage, and we talk to them, and, you know, one particular student, I'm thinking about his loss, his father. He has just nothing really to live for. And he comes here and interacts with the adults, because we are basically his role models. You know, we are his hope. And I see this over and over and over again here at Smith, the success stories. Students who really had no hope until they came to Smith. And we trained them, we gave them the skill. They finally had some academic success. We hear that over and over again, how they hated middle school, they hated elementary school, and then they come to Smith, and, you know, the doors are open, they're quite independent. So I saw a lot of similarities between Smith and what you're gonna see here. And, you know, so I felt I wanted to share this with my admin team, because I feel this a lot, okay? I see this a lot with our students, I see this a lot with our staff. On the flip side, we're all stressing out, okay? We're still coming out of the pandemic, and that stress level is still at an all-time high. And I'm seeing that amongst the adults. And I wanted this video to be a reminder that no matter how difficult our day is, it can always be more difficult, okay? If we're having a bad day at work, somebody else is having a worse day, okay? So it just gives me a new, fresh sort of perspective on life. But these kids and the motivation to save one kid, and here at Smith, to help one kid graduate and have, hopefully, that door opened and have success in life, that's my why, okay? And I told my admin team, I worked at previous schools, a traditional high school, oftentimes as a school counselor or administrator. Most of the kids thought it was their birthright to get a high school diploma. That's just what they do, okay? They never thought about the challenge it is to earn a high school diploma. A lot of our students here at Smith, they realize it's not a birthright, they have to work for it. And I really do value that, and that sort of motivates me to be here at Smith. So with that said, I'm gonna show you this video, at least part of it.
Hello? Yes. Poor son.
I'm not saying no to anything this trip. That's my...
That's a great attitude.
Can I, like, sit back or have to sit up? I need a pillow, though, kind of, a pillow.
My name is Steven Ochiem. I grew up in Kibera.
My name is Molly Roden. I'm from West Hampton, Massachusetts.
I'm Ray Racine. I'm from South Hadley, originally from Chigari.
I'm Eddie Wangi. I was born and raised here in Kibera, so I've lived here my entire life.
My name is Zida, and I'm from Veltre Town.
So my name is Fidel Muyendo. I come from western part of Kenya, but let's say, born and bred in Nairobi. I'm 29 years old, and I am an employee of Acacia Truage. I came in 2017, around May. We were just, let's say, 10 people, yes. Four guys from Kibera, and around seven guys from Brackenass. So we were to engage ourselves, let's say, share ideas on what you can do to bring up Acacia.
So growing up in slum, it's not an easy thing. It's not a walk in the park. At times, you only get one meal a day, and at some point, I also took a role from my parents, like, going to work at a very tender age. So I used to sell metals, so that I could also help my mom feed us. So going to school was not in my mind. I don't know how educational academics is taken in the U.S., but in Kenya, it's really a big thing. Steven over here is one of the few people in our family that has graduated. This is a really big deal. It was a big deal for me, a big deal for us, because I am the first one in our family. So I had to set that example for all of them. I have brother Collins, and my two sisters. And keeping in mind that you're coming in from Kibera, even the university or the high school that we went in through, they were like, no, you're coming from Kibera? No, we don't want to associate to be, because the people had already red-zoned Kibera that these are really bad people coming in from Kibera.
No matter what you hear or see on TV, doesn't prepare you for seeing it in person and realizing this is how they live. Yeah, meeting Eddie and Maxwell was, is amazing, and their mom, what an incredible story they have. But realizing, and seeing their home, and realizing they've lived there for over 30 years, is, it's just, the whole thing is humbling.
I'm not from Kibera, so the way I interacted with them, people from Kibera. I realized there's more than just a job. If you're out of Kibera, let's say, you don't realize how life is, because you might take life for granted. Until you find that person who you can engage with, you realize that you should appreciate life. You should also thank God for what you have. When I was growing up, all this time I've stayed in Nairobi, I'd never entered Kibera, yes. So outside me, there's usually a perception about Kibera, you know, the gangs, let's say, diseases, the current place, the slum in general. I had never stepped in Kibera, even my friends, no one knew about, let's say, Kibera internally.
It's difficult to see. Watching videos or looking at pictures doesn't do it justice. Walking and seeing what they lived through, and surviving in, and what they don't have. What I take for granted, this world's apart. We got to tour one home, and it looked, and it's probably one of the nicer homes here. I can't put to words. They have another level of respect that I can't done that. Their daily life is just to get to the next day.
Yeah, so it's such a mix of emotions, because it's such joy. Like, while I'm there, it's pure happiness and joy. Every once in a while, I'll catch myself, like, thinking about what's actually going on right now. I'll, like, tear up, but then it's like, no, these kids just need me right now to be present, be here with them.
So when I came to Acacia, you know, we engaged with my friends. They also took me there for the first time, yes, and I could see what they were going through. They said they took me inside Kibera. The first day, I was a bit scared, or let's say, nervous, because still, my perception was about, let's say, the gangs, I mean, they might drug me, but I found amazing people, very friendly, and I realized the stories that they give outside there is not really inside. So when you come to Acacia, you see, let's say, you will see someone who slept hungry the other night, but when he's at work, you'll see him smiling every day. You're like, how do you really do that? I got curious of what they were doing, and you'll find him or her telling me that they slept hungry. Maybe I was reading the Bible through the night, asking God, why this happened to me? So they will give me, let's say, five good verses, what really transformed their lives, what maneuvered them from the tough challenges of what they were going through.
That's the interesting, like, I didn't really know what to expect. Like, I knew I would be emotional, and it'd be hard, like, I knew that. Today, when we were leaving, I saw two of my eighth graders, White Ophelia and Stellus. We were leaving on the bus, and he had gone out to the end to, like, wave at us. I hadn't seen, I didn't, she knew that he did that. And I looked out, and I saw him. I leaned over and waved at him, and when he saw me, he had a big smile, and he waved back. We're to drive away, leaving him while he's standing on the dirt, surrounded by trash, and he can't leave. I can't imagine, like, being in their shoes, and then just coming to school. And especially the older kids, like, the amount of pressure they have on them. They know their only way out is to do well at school. You have to pass this test in eighth grade in order to get into high school. But not only do you have to get into high school, you have to pay for high school. And most of those kids can't pay for high school unless someone helps them. Actually, I don't think any kid in Kibera could pay for high school.
Making out and seeing my life outside Kibera was nearly impossible. It was just a mere dream. I'm the eldest son in the family. So I had to take my father's role at some point. So it was, it was difficult, and it turned over for Niho. Niho came with a program that took kids to high school to receive high school education. So I was among the first beneficiaries to receive high school education. It was a second chance given to us through Niho initiative. So through education, that's where I am right now. The hope that Niho brought, that's what's keeping me moving now.
So I was obviously working in a school back home. I was beyond excited to come and meet these kids and the teachers, too, here. And when the bus pulled up, and we got off the bus, and I could hear the kids, but you couldn't see them, we were beyond that gate. And my stomach did a flip, just hearing the kids' voices, and the gates opened, and the kids were there, and the singing and the greeting. And I thought, they're so happy to see us. There's so much love and joy, which I had been told about, but I wasn't prepared to experience it myself. And so as we went up the stairs and kept on going, and the singing continued, by the time we reached the roof deck, I couldn't breathe. I was so overtaken with the sheer joy and the smiles on their faces, and thought, just take it in. Don't, don't let your mind go anywhere else right now. Just be here, present in this moment, and take this in, because you may never experience something quite like this ever again.
My biggest moment so far was getting off the bus and waiting on the other side of that green door. Just hearing, hearing the joy, the laughter, the excitement, and for what? For us, for me? And then we opened that door. Nothing in the world prepared me for the joy, the laughter, the love, the excitement that they had for us, for me. This was like the celebration... This was like the celebration that I've never seen for anything that they were celebrating us coming to. They don't even know what we were here for. And that was amazing.
The kids are so happy. And we can't imagine being happy in that situation. Which I think partially is why it's so sad for us. Because it's like, how, it makes us look at ourselves to be like, if they are so happy with nothing and we're miserable, something's going on here. Something doesn't make sense. And then it makes us feel almost like projecting onto them. Like that you should be miserable because I would be miserable if I was you. But then, I think I was missing the part where like they had those relationships. So we are actually missing the way that they have.
There are two important days in someone's life. The day that you're born. And the day that you realize why you're born. So I really think that it's a good thing if you're.
So we played that and ended it on that, I thought was the perfect cue. You know, when you realize why you were born, you know, what your purpose is. It just makes everything much clearer and you had that motivation. And I think, you know, when I started the school year, and I know that we have students coming here, nothing like Kibera, okay? But they're coming here needing that hope, they're needing that opportunity. They need our teachers and they need the student staff to be present. You hear that many times. You just have to be present for the students. And as Molly was saying, you know, the one thing that we offer this year is those relationships. Be able to be here for those students. And oftentimes in life here in the US, we fail to recognize the small things in life. So we're gonna have tough days this year, okay? Whatever that the issue is, whether it's a student issue, a facility issue, a budget issue in the springtime, whatever the issue causes stress, I think if I can just hit the pause button and step back and say, this is why I'm here, is to help those students who need us, more so than a traditional school. So that's why I love this school. That's why I love being here, working with our staff. I've said this from day one. Our staff are probably the most logical, down-to-earth individuals who know how to engage students. And I watched this video and now I understand why I say that. Because our staff know what is important here. To make those connections with the students, making sure they receive the education, not only on the academic side, related back to the shops, provide a skill, provide a real-world opportunity. And to see the kids graduate, and then the kids don't want to leave. They always want to come back. But then they get the jobs and then they get involved in advisories. And we talked about when we go on the road show. And you know, our graduates get into those communities and become the taxpayers. So you see this cycle. It happens here at Smith and in the vocational world that often doesn't happen in a traditional school setting. So I just applaud the school, I applaud the Avent team. If anybody is questioning what my why is, that video just highlighted that a lot. That was the Avent retreat. Moving on, the other aspect of instructional leadership, again, just planning ahead and looking ahead. Next week, if you can believe our summer vacation is just about done. But next Thursday, all staff return. And Joe, we will give the annual convocation. Again, a chance to kick off, start the year on the right foot, talk about the theme, making sure the staff are ready. I think it's really gonna be a great start to hopefully another great school year. So the second standard is the management and operations. So for this month, I just went around with Joe yesterday, took several photos. I'm not sure how Tim is even here and still standing. You're gonna see over the next several slides, took more than one slide to highlight just a small slice of what's happening here on campus. These pictures were yesterday, okay? And I'm not a great photographer, so I cannot capture truly what is happening in some of these areas. I just want you to realize this is yesterday. We have new staff here next Wednesday. We have all staff returning here next Thursday. We have new students here for orientation next Friday. School begins less than two weeks from today. And you're gonna see what's happening here on campus is quite incredible. A little nerve-wracking, I can't even imagine how it's going to be. So on the left-hand side, I do want to thank the city for helping us out with the air conditioning project for C Building. We're right along. So that's one of the split units for the classrooms in C Building. So again, the goal being, as you all know, we'll have air conditioning in all of the academic classrooms in C Building. In the middle, this was me using the fob at the main entrance here in A Building. So what you're looking at in that main picture there, that contraption at the top, okay? There's a camera. And so that way, a visitor or a guest, a vendor, whoever does not have a fob, you know, as most schools, if you hit the button, it will appear in the main office and they'll be able to access the door and allow the visitors in. Now, bottom contraption, the middle contraption where my fob is, my hand is, this is what you will be receiving. Typical fob, okay? It's tied, each of us are identified, so we can see who's going where when. We have different categories set up. But as staff will have that, students will have that. And they can fob in, they can access the door, the door will unlock, you can open the door and gain access to the buildings. And then the bottom is the ADA push button for anybody who needs assistance to open the door. And again, they are tied together, that was one of our questions during the early part of the project. You can't just simply hit the ADA button and the door is not gonna automatically open. You need to have access via the fob. So the security measurement is still there. This is again through the main doors throughout campus. The categories that we have set up already. And we had a great discussion at the leadership team last week. Right now, we have three categories. We may have to add a fourth, depending on, we're thinking like the cleaning service and other groups. But the three main groups that we have right now is the student population, the staff faculty population, and administration population. So in essence, administrators would have access 24/7, 365 if they wanted to come in. There's discussion about how this fob could actually activate and deactivate an alarm in the building. It could all be tied together. Students would have access to the buildings, certain buildings, certain times of the day, school year, okay? And staff would have a similar setup, but a longer day. They'd have access to buildings longer in the evening. But again, only certain days. So staff can suddenly come in over the summer or weekends and things like that. So I'm very excited with this. I know this was a concern, I came up to the teachers, it's been a concern on our radar for quite a while. So faintly, we're finally at the point where we can begin to provide some more security. It's not a totally locked-down campus. There will never be a lockdown campus. I think as a vocational school, you can just think of the bay doors being open. But we are definitely moving in the right direction. On the right-hand side, I want to thank Joe with his vision. This is truly a testament to us as an agricultural school. When you think of a barn, you think of split rail fencing. So this is a project that we empowered the summer horticulture crew over the last several years. They tried to take on a project to beautify the campus. This summer, they've been able to hopefully complete in the next couple of days, the split rail fencing. Although we're not, if you haven't had a chance to see it, please stop and look at it. I think it really highlights what we do here. And back to the why, why we're here. We're here for the agricultural programs. So this is where, how is it gonna get done for day one? I can't answer that question. On the left-hand side, this is the culinary hood project. So if you walked into the kitchen, this is our chapter 74 culinary program. It looks like a bottleneck, to be perfectly honest. I'm not sure if it looks any better today, Tim, does it?
A little bit.
A little bit, okay. This is way overdue. We've had to have this system. You know, I joked in the past, the fire department became best friends with us. Anytime we were doing hamburgers or bacon or whatever, you know, the alarms would go off. We couldn't filter out this smoke well enough. So hopefully relatively soon, that will be put back together. We're gonna have state-of-the-art systems in there. And we'll be able to teach and operate much nicer. So anyways, we're getting there. The middle picture is gonna be Mr. LaRoe's new office. Again, as a reminder, I want to take the board for allowing through the budget process to expand our leadership team. So actually Josh Clark, I knew as a principal, he's in the peanut gallery. He wanted to see how these meetings run. So by hiring Josh, we knew the space was limited. And we knew the priority was in the main office. The office really should have a building-based administration. So the president and the two assistant principals. So that has happened. That meant Ms. Shardier, vocational director, had to move out. So she has moved into Mr. LaRoe's current office in B Building, which makes a lot of sense. She will now be immersed into the vocational programs will be around here. Just like Ms. Parks, as the academic coordinator, is immersed in C Building, the academic classroom. So it makes a lot of sense organizationally. But we needed a new home for Mr. LaRoe. So this space used to be the storage closet for parking rack. We are working on new space to store all of the parking rack material and supplies. Right now, it's in the back hallway. That closet is being renovated, as you can see, it's almost done into an office. Makes a lot of sense, it's looking great. And Jeff will be in there before you know it. On the right-hand side, that picture is the collision-related classroom. So the floor was stripped down, the walls were repainted, new ceiling being put in, the LED lighting being put in. It's gonna match, if you went through that door on the opposite wall there that you see, if you walked through that door, that's the automotive-related space, which was redone last year through the skills scout with ramp. We thought through equity, it made a lot of sense that the collision-related should match, at least be on par with automotive. So when I walked through yesterday, Tim and his crew, you can kind of see, they were doing the epoxy flooring, the kickboard all the way around. Is it done today?
No, we got a code tomorrow and a code Thursday, we should be out of work.
So you'll see in a future picture, you'll see a similar floor, okay? But it's that epoxy flooring that we're doing really throughout campus. It looks beautiful, it's more adorable. So it's gonna look great when it's all done. So that's collisions-related room that will be done, hopefully relatively soon. On the left-hand side, the foundation has been poured, the pad has been poured. This is gonna be the new companion animal building. That's where our canines will be for kenneling and grooming and whatnot. In the background, you can see the trust system, all the trusses are on site in the MS barn, right? Rather than storing a lot of animals at the moment, we're storing a lot of the building material for this particular structure. So I hope honestly, and I think we talked about as a board, was we were gonna have this building enclosed over the summer. It's obviously not enclosed. But we will be working on that. And then with the students back on campus, they're gonna be able to work on the inside to do a lot of the interior work when it comes to plumbing, electrical, and carpentry. So that would be wonderful when we have that building up and running. It really expands our animal science program, like we've been talking about for the last several years. With that said, the middle picture with the green walls, that was formerly the animal science-related classroom. That's sort of the annex off of the MS barn. And as you know, when we took back the GCC building, we renovated that building last year. That's now the animal science-related classrooms. That allowed us to get the students out of that space as far as a related classroom, which it allowed us to do now, what you see on the right-hand side of that picture. That's the interior picture, interior space of that same building. That's gonna become the pocket pet lab. That's where the gerbils and the rabbits and the snakes and all the other fun small animals that I don't see will be stored in that new lab. You can see that floor, that's the epoxy floor I'm referring to. So it's the gray with the scuttle in there. So a beautiful new space. You can see the outside, we're redoing the siding. When we tore into it, the rodents had basically intruded all the insulation. It was not a pretty sight. So thank you to Tim and his crew. Totally redid the exterior walls, re-insulated, and redoing the interior. So it'll be great for our students. So a lot of work there.
Rodents are the pocket pets, right? These are different rodents?
Correct. Rodents have a lot of, yes, why? In the last two photos, we talked about, you know, the Apple storage, okay? That's the former name of that storage barn you see on the left-hand side. We had a lot of rotten still work. So you've heard reports over the past several months. We're basically at the final stage, wrapping up that particular project. You can see those four bays are typically assigned to different shops. That's where they can store a lot of the material and supplies. And then underneath that, the backside is the pasture, you can see Route 9. Underneath that is sort of a storage area, sort of housing area for some of our animals at times. As you can see, that's nearing completion as well. On the right-hand side, you've heard a lot of stories and feedback about stormwater system. Thank you to the city for wrapping this particular project up. I'm not sure if you've noticed this, if you're driven by on Route 9, but that's the new swale that was put in, sort of on that front corner of the campus, looking down into the pasture. So keep our fingers crossed that the engineers did the calculations correctly and we can sort of mitigate the stormwater as appropriate. So the questions about some of the projects? I know Tim's gonna be worrying a little bit. But I just want visually for the board to see what's happening on campus. And again, this is yesterday. My people on campus next week. So it'll be a lot happening over the next week we gotta have.
Pictures are such a good idea. Appreciate you having to see it.
No pictures for this one, okay? But this is the horticultural building update, just briefly. As Mr. Quandoo said, we met again as a full building committee. We are really eyeball-deep into the design phase of this. Small revisions here and there, but the basic concept is still there. Okay, you have the classroom space and the shop space. The idea right now is it's really to be built on the deck side of the football field. So we are still on that tab. Right now, the big holdup right now is various testing that we have to have. Soil testing and whatnot, water testing to make sure that we have clean soil and we're able to appropriately build on it. So there's some hole up there. You're trying to get the contracts in place and getting engineers out. But once that's done, then we can really get into the final stages of the initial design. So then we can go out to, hopefully in September or October, go out to the cost estimator and get a cost estimate of this building. And that's obviously gonna be, you know, where the conversation then really is dripped. Can we afford this? If we can't, how do we afford it? There's a great conversation today about potential grants or other subsidies out there. There's possibilities around donations, around building material. So there are some opportunities, but I will be honest, I've been honest with you on one. I am worried about the overall cost and how we close this gap. So that fear has not gone away. If anything, it's only increased over the last couple of months, to be honest. But that's where we are now.
It's all of our problem?
Yes. The third standard is family and community engagement. So with that sort of overall umbrella, just want to remind the board, I've already mentioned it. Next Friday is the new student orientation, where we'll be welcoming all incoming freshmen, along with sophomores, juniors, who might be coming in as new students as well. We welcome them with the families. So it's a wonderful morning where we have a chance to do some short presentations. The students are able to go out and do a tour of the campus. They're able to follow their actual schedule, so they're able to orient themselves to the academic classes. While that's happening, the families are back with us. And we're talking more detail about, from the family perspective, you know, what can they expect? And then Gaddis will speak and so on and so forth. So that's next Friday. Another task I had with the leadership team last week at the retreat. Back to one of my goals is the newsletter. And really trying to identify various focus areas that the newsletter can focus on throughout the year. And my vision is my entry into the newsletter, I really want it to be informative, educational. And give the community something to learn about, whether it's specific about Smith, whether it's more about vocational ed in general, whatever the topic happens to be, I want it to be informative. And then the rest of the newsletter can sort of drill down into the details and have other administrators or other stakeholders here at school provide some of the details about what's happening here at school. So we had a great activity of just brainstorming. This is no particular order. This is not a chronological order, this is not a priority list. But it's just a list of topics that you may see in my newsletters throughout the year. There's, I think, 15, and there's only 10 newsletters. So obviously, some of these topics may not happen this year, they may happen following year. I want to take the leadership team, you know, brainstorming some, I think, viable, valid, and very valuable topics that we can talk about for our families. So that's gonna really expand on that family engagement aspect. Couple of updates. One was, I believe it was last week or the week before, I had a telephone conversation with the Hatfield town administrator, Marlene. She reached out, I think I was down at the Cape, honestly, when communication first happened. So to give the board a little bit of background, Hatfield was contacted by Franklin Tech, off in Franklin County, wondering if Hatfield wanted to become a member of Franklin County Tech. Now, to know your geography, Hatfield is not in Franklin County. Hatfield is in Hampshire County. Hatfield, when it comes to enrollment, Hatfield sends one to two students a year to Franklin Tech. Last school year and this school year coming up, we are anticipating 20 students from Hatfield. So the vast majority of students who go to a vocational school from Hatfield come here to stay. So anyhow, Hatfield received the invitation to become a full member of Franklin Tech. Marlene was doing due diligence. She spoke to her superintendent at Hatfield, who recommended, as she speak to me. So she reached out, we spoke, we had a great conversation. It was more about education, honestly, about what a school membership, okay? That regional agreement would look like for Hatfield if they bought into Franklin Tech. I explained that we don't really have a regional agreement here at Smith, okay? But we have a school of preference, and that's a state regulation that they could pursue. a school of preference, and that's a state regulation that they could pursue. And I talked about the pros and cons of both. The biggest thing that I think would be the eye-opener from our lead at Hatfield's perspective was that if they became a member of Franklin Tech, they then are part of the whole capital improvement expense ownership of anything that happens at Franklin Tech that we got a hook. That never occurred in that conversation initially. We talked about the conversation as a board a few years ago, there was another community that reached out to us asking about a school of preference. As a board, you voted on providing a reduced rate of the non-resident tuition rate if that community declared Smith Vocational their school of preference. I shared all of that with Marlene, she was very happy to hear that. We talked about transportation, we talked about a lot. I think she can be more informed to now go back to the select board and discuss options. So I'm just letting the board know, there was that initial conversation, nothing was promised, I think at least now Marlene knows the pros and cons, I'll keep the board updated.
Also, there's a woman here at the school, named after their founder.
Yes, and the founder of our school.
The founder.
So I, yes. So it was very polite, professional, but very initial, just answering a lot of questions and giving her a lot of information.
To be looking at that sign, thinking, well, we have to take it down.
The second of all, I've been meaning to update the board over the last couple of months, I'm sure Tim can give more details, but Tim was approached by, this is the butterfly, this group approached you?
The Energy Commission at town.
The Energy Commission from the city?
Energy and Sustainability Commission.
Yep.
Reached out to see if we would have some plot of land that we could sort of dedicate and do seeding of some type of wild flower that attracts butterflies, it'd be, in essence, becoming a butterfly habitat. And we talked about the field, one of the fields that we have are by the VA property. So we've agreed, so it's very minimal impact on us and our operations, Tim and his crew were able to go in and plow and seed. So again, as you're driving along Route 9 at some point, you may see some beautiful flowers, and wonder why, well, they're attracting the butterflies. So just letting the board know.
We actually haven't plowed it yet, it's been too wet to go in there, so it's a little dry south.
Add to the list.
Yep.
I'm wondering if that's kind of good to the horticultural group at all? Seems like a potential, right, like thinking about landscape, maybe trying to design that field, incorporating more sustainable kinds of practices, so they go up there, right?
They do.
So we'll have to make sure the horticulture team is aware.
That's another community outreach project we have. So the third standard is professional culture. So just a couple of highlights over the past month, the one, a lot of the administrators attended the annual MABA planning retreat down at Devon's, and just wanted to highlight some of the keynote speakers. A lot of that planning retreat is just a chance as administrators, colleagues within the vocational world across the state to come together and just collaborate and consult and talk about best practices, and make sure that we're, again, nobody's alone, we're all in together and sharing ideas. But these were the major keynote speakers, we had the Education Secretary, Tubi Loi, who was there to kick off, as I've said several times, whenever he speaks, he's just, he's fabulous when he speaks, and he listens, which is wonderful. The next morning, we had Commissioner Riley, that's sort of an annual thing, and he'll always show up and give some high-level updates from Desi, really nothing too new, but sort of the discussion around MCAS, okay, is still a topic, it's not still a topic, it's becoming a hot topic, what it may look like. Both individuals, I think, respect vocational ed, they understand our hands-on, our engaging model, we don't want to get away from that, and how can we highlight that more? The first afternoon, BPS is Boston Public School, their new superintendent, Skipper, joined us via Zoom, and we sort of had a, there was a presentation that Boston Public Schools gave the administrators, and then they came up with a short Q and A. The focus was, through many, many, many years in political turnover within the city, Madison Park, which happens to be their vocational school, it sounds like there's some political buy-in, and potentially some financial buy-in to really revamp Madison Park, basically rebuilding. So the superintendent was talking about that process, what it may look like, the amount of money that Boston, as an individual city, has verbally promised BPS in updating a lot of the schools, they're talking over a billion dollars, okay, as a city, reinvesting in the schools, so if I ask for a billion or two from the mayor, it's not a billion, so.
That's real.
Correct, yes. But the billion isn't for the ones, the billion is for all of the schools.
She was speaking to the?
Her focus was Madison Park, that was the audience. And then lastly, Skills USA, the Technology Director spoke. Again, it was a great, it was a long presentation, but it was a long presentation because Skills, as we all know as a board, they do wonderful things, and there's wonderful opportunities that our students are able to engage in and experience because of Skills USA, so those were the four main keynote speakers a couple of weeks ago. Back to the admin retreat, this was another activity that as the leadership team we went through, and I wanted to highlight with the board. One of my goals was, again, to do a better job reporting to the board what's happening here on campus, so rather than the week before a board meeting, trying to figure out what department or what activity would be showcased as the school spotlight, we thought it would make a lot more sense, let's just map it out. That would combine that particular shop or academic area or student activity, plenty of time to plan rather than three or four days. So we sort of brainstormed, knowing the typical calendar, so in September, you can expect adult ed, October you can expect art, perhaps we can open it up more to communities in general, November would be FFA, December would be the Health Assisting Program, January would be English, February would be athletics/Co-op, March would be Animal Science, April would be Engineering/Physics, May would be Skills USA, and June, depending on the year, depending on the end of the year, the snow days, but right now we've penciled in Plumbing and Electrical. So just to kind of give the board an update, we wanted to have a more diverse offering, seems like we've been focusing a lot on the vocational side. With these presentations, I want to make sure that the board realizes, besides Mike Parks, he does a wonderful job with the MCAS analysis and overview, but really want to, you know, dig down more and get some of the academic departments in front of you to talk about what happens with the academics here at campus. So a lot of planning going on over the summer. Donations, there were none to report for this past month. In the news, I know you can't read this article, but this was an article, I think it was above the fold actually, in the Gazette a few weeks ago, about the new health center, sort of revitalized, okay, the Hilltown Health Network, they did receive some more funding, still not enough funding to build the building, but there was a wonderful article, the reporter reached out to me as well, so if you haven't had a chance, I can send it to you if you want. But again, it's still out there, we definitely want to have that, it'd be a great addition to our school and our campus, and I feel it could be a great addition to the community. Looking ahead, I kept this sort of as a template, not to review as a summary, a very boring summary to the board, I wanted to give the board an update of what might be happening over the next month or so. So we have these weekly Horticultural Building check-in meetings on Tuesday, you'll see that on this particular slide, I've already mentioned, next Wednesday is the new staff orientation, then Thursday through Saturday, so basically all of next weekend, the administrators will be staffing the Covington Fair, so if you have a chance, nothing better to do, stop by the Covington Fair and see us. We have Thursday as the all-staff report back, that's their convocation day, Friday's new student orientation, we talked about all of that. You go home for the weekend, again, administrators are working that weekend, up at Covington Fair, you come back on that Monday, that's the first day of school. Again, more Horticultural check-in meetings on that Friday, September 1st, this is a contractual obligation, there's no school on that Friday to provide staff and students the extended Labor Day weekend holiday break. That's also the Three County Fair weekend, opening up on Friday night, Friday night, if you stop by the Three County Fair, you will see administrators staffing the barn, and then the rest of the weekend, Saturday through Monday, we actually pay staff to be there, so we'll have representation in the barn throughout the weekend, if you want to go and stop by. It's a great opportunity for us to showcase the school. I mentioned Monday's Labor Day, there's no school, campus is closed, more check-in meetings with the Horticulture Subcommittee. Friday, the 8th, is the first Connecticut Valley Steering Superintendent Roundtable, that's C-B-S-R, their monthly luncheon at the Laney House, and in September, we'll have Commissioner Riley out here to, again, give some updates from Desi. We have a faculty meeting, more check-in meetings for Horticulture. Just an update for the community, Wednesday, September 13th, is the first early release, that's where the students go home early, and we have the afternoon dedicated for professional development for our staff, so that's the first one of the year. Department head meeting, no school, I just found out today, you may want to discuss this as a board, I'm not sure how this would go over, but when we approved the calendar, we penciled in September 19th as primary day, we typically host elections here on campus, so we've already closed school for that particular day, there's an agenda item later this evening that we'll talk about, maybe this becomes a discussion, I'll leave it up to the board. But right now, there's no school, primary election day, even though there's no primary. That same evening will be the next month's full building committee for the Horticultural rebuild, and then it's the next full board meeting on that Sunday. With that, I'll turn it back to the chair.
Thanks, Eric.
Joe?
Yes, good evening. Just a quick update, I'll make the changes for you, Deb, it looks like I didn't properly update that first line, but our current enrollment for the 23-24 school year is 579, with 462 tuitions. Currently, we sit at 148 ninth graders that have registered, 27 from North Hampton, we have verbal commitments, which guarantee we're going to be at the 150, we're waiting for paperwork and things to come in. If there's spots available, we'll continue to move down that waitlist. Opening school update, so the new staff orientation is going to be next Wednesday, August 23rd, we have six new staff members, one because of the addition into Animal Science, where we had an instructor move out of AgMac over, and one due to retirement, so really, it's very low turnover this year, four members, one we lost in January when they took the vocational director's job in Holyoke. So three new staff members, basically is the net, pretty good, two of which we hired in May of last year, and they came in for the last month of school, but they are still going to come through the new staff orientation on Wednesday. So very low turnover this year. Convocation, as Dr. Lincoln Over said, that's on Thursday, the 24th, we'll present on some updates and key highlights of the month of September, as well as staff will be released to their areas in the afternoon to prepare. A new student orientation will be on Friday morning, August 25th, that'll take place in our gymnasium, students will tour, there's a remainder of students that still need to take the math placement exam, that helps us make sure that we get in the right level, as you're aware, with 150 students coming from 60 different communities, math can mean different things in different places, so really trying to help get them in the proper level of math, so we have some students that'll finish up taking that, we're about, we're about 70% of students have taken the exam, so the remaining will take it after their tours and after they go through their schedule on that day, giving time for our school counselors to make adjustments and shift things. First day of school is August 28th. Dr. Lincoln Over talked about the FOBs, we'll distribute the FOBs to freshmen on that Friday when they're here, and we'll distribute the FOBs to everyone else on Monday morning with their school, with their schedules, but the school won't go down fully into operational mode on those FOBs until that Tuesday, just to make sure that everybody has everything and they're ready to go.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I guess I'll wait for Tim to report. Go ahead, Joe, sorry.
Fair staffing, as Dr. Lincoln Over said, administrators will support the Covington Fair, we're all filled up for the Tri-County Fair on Labor Day weekend, and we have assigned the administrator on duty for that weekend will be our Technology Director, Josh Shear. Our final hire was our PE teacher, that took place in between the July meeting and this meeting, so we are fully staffed, which is a good thing. Any other questions? That's my report.
You made, I'm sorry, you made a comment, 60 different communities, is that accurate?
Yeah.
Ascending districts?
Approximately, I have to go through and look, but it generally falls between 56 and 62, 63 in a given year. I don't have the exact number for this coming year.
So we're fully staffed this far before the start of school? It's fantastic. I can't imagine what the average is for the state, but do we know how we compare it to other vocational schools in the state in terms of being fully staffed at this point?
I think we are, I, when we went to connect for the MABA planning retreat a week and a half ago, I think we're the minority of schools that are fully staffed.
Small percentage, yeah.
I would say so.
The testament to your leadership, your leadership team, your political leadership, people want to work here.
Yeah, I think the district has a great reputation right now, hopefully we'll keep that going, but yeah, we are definitely hearing anecdotally from them, they are not fully staffed.
I also have questions about the math placement test, is it electronic or paper and pencil?
It is, it's electronic this year, so it gets graded immediately. In the past, we were doing it in the first couple of days of school and then shifting, so it was rather disruptive. A year before Andy and I got here, they were still doing it in the summer, they had a grant to bring teachers in, so we were able to use it, Mike Parks, through one of his grants, was able to use the money for this testing, it's definitely a better model to try to go back to that and get the students in. We offered multiple sessions, we offered a day on the Saturday, we offered in the morning during the week and in the evening during the week, to try to, try to hit as many opportunities as soon as to come, but still, when they come on that day next Friday, we'll be able to do, hopefully, the remainder, if there are any students that aren't present, I think we'd be able to count on our hand how many students would have to make it up that first day of school, but we'll make sure everybody's tested.
They have to take it in person, but it's graded almost immediately?
Correct, yeah, we want them here just to make sure that we know they're the ones taking it.
Yep, okay.
That's a true reflection, so that they get properly placed.
Do you know where the test comes from?
Our staff created the test. Yeah, our staff created the test to highlight the key areas, so they've been using it, and every year they review it and make sure that it's doing what we want it to do. They then created it using, just like a Google form, so, you know, using Google Classroom to create an exam, so they're able to grade it right away. One change already in reflecting is we're going to have, we're going to have an additional teacher present, so that we can talk about their results immediately, as they go out of it and talk about how they feel they did, their results, where they most likely be placed, trying to get a better idea for the math that they did, so that it just doesn't capture just their performance on that day.
More robust.
Yeah.
And what are the math placement options for students in ninth grade?
So, yeah, in ninth grade, they can go into integrated math one, they can go into algebra, honors algebra, or we have been able to add a, almost like a pull-out math, where it's a teacher so that they have math and special ed, that would be for our media students.
It's a co-talk.
Co-talk class.
It's inclusion.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's inclusion, sorry. It's a push-in, so it's, we have a specialized teacher with a regular teacher.
And then we also use it to look at the MCAS math placement.
And do we, do students take any other placement tests in any other subjects, or just in math?
Just in math, the other one is optional right now, and that's if they want to be evaluated for honors English in ninth grade.
Because there are a good amount of options in other subject areas, right, at least in English and science, or no?
Well, science is pretty much dictated by the shop that you go in, so if you're in sort of the, your health sciences, or your, you know, like criminal justice, or health, culinary, others like that, animal science, you go through the biology track. If you are in manufacturing, carpentry, cabin make, plumbing, you go through the physics track. So we're trying to match your science to the areas that you're going to be focusing on with your vocational trade.
What about Project Lead the Way?
Project Lead the Way is in place of the MCAS math in ninth and 10th grade. So students that place well, or want the challenge, can opt into the Project Lead the Way. So during that first period of class on their shop weeks, that's where we do the second class of math, so all students in ninth, 10th grade do get a double English and a double math.
Gotcha.
It just looks a little different than what the focus is on.
Depending on how much support they need.
Right, so the MCAS, the Project Lead the Way in ninth and 10th grade is not in place of your science. You're still taking your MCAS science-based class, biology or physics, so the Lead the Way is really in place of those ninth and 10th grade MCAS math. You're still taking your MCAS science-based class, biology or physics. So the Lead the Way is really in place of those ninth and 10th grade MCAS math prep. So for those students, when we talk about kind of meeting students at their level, students that are already really great at math and want to move on to challenge themselves, have that opportunity to challenge themselves and then go through the Project Lead the Way. The students can opt into Project Lead the Way later on. So there are available classes in robotics and engineering for 11th and 12th grade.
It's just fabulous, all the options here. Dr. Lincoln Over alluded to, you know, elimination of MCAS as a competency determination being a hot topic. And one of the things I think that we all will be thinking about is if MCAS is no longer used as a competency determination for graduation, to what extent will we be offering support for the MCAS to our ninth and 10th graders? Like, I recognize that those, the support that we provide has been tremendous for students and results and really high passing rate for our students. With MCAS taken away, what will that look like? What do we want it to look like? What do we want to do with that instructional time? You know, and what aligns with our mission, our educational mission? It'll be a big question, I think. Thank you for answering all those questions.
So, what's your report, Terry?
Yep. I'll just update kind of what Andy already touched on. So the AC project in Seabill, and the manufacturer of the units should be here tomorrow to start them up and verify they're all working. And then that project will be done. The guys can finish the floors in there. Seabill will be done. As bad as the kitchen looks right now, I think by next Wednesday, it will be all back together with new lights, new ceiling, an axle system. If everybody shows up like they say they're gonna, we should be back by next Wednesday. The hole in the kitchen, cafeteria kitchen floor, if we get our plumbing inspector tomorrow says that the grease trap is good, we can start to backfill that, retile it. The dishwasher that initiated this grease trap is on hold by the manufacturer, by the factory. So we'll just have to wait for that. But that should be back in shape.
Question?
Yep.
This is a new occurring problem that just developed recently?
No, it was just an upgraded dishwasher. But then once you trigger new code, that makes it have to have its own separate grease trap.
Okay.
And then additional code that needs its own floor sink too. So, let's see. Auto body should be back by next Tuesday. The classroom, new ceiling put in. The floor will be done by Friday. The animal science classroom and the MS part should be all done by Friday. I got a plumber putting in a new water filling station, bottle filling station in there in the hallway. Give the guys to paint that up. I do anticipate four walls and maybe the trusses set before tenants. The, all right. Sorry. Joe, the FOB door system, during the installation, that goes smoothly? Any major glitches with software technology? Everything fall into place? As far as facilities part, no, they did a nice job.
One transition we did do, we were going to use cards, but Joe decided he wanted to move to the FOBs. So we're in the process, my staff, putting the key tags on with the student names so they can hand it out to the ninth graders.
I thought it was always going to be a FOB.
It was going to be a FOB card that we could print their school ID on. And part of it was, I think it was kind of like a hangover idea from when we have initially talked about this about six or seven years ago when it was about three quarters of a million dollars. And there was a, technology has certainly improved and the way that it integrates now is a lot faster. So when we started as a building-level admin team, we said, what's the pros and cons of all this? And I think to have to reprint ID cards yearly, the cost of it, because they become wasted after that. Whereas the FOBs are interchangeable. You could just wipe them clean. You can reprogram it and give it to somebody new. Kids change throughout the course of the year. They lose them, things like that. So I think when we look at it from a management standpoint and really when we talk about organizing it, it's far easier to organize the FOB tags. But yeah, we were thinking about trying to combine because originally, the idea was that we would be using a barcode system. We know now, technology-wise, the barcode system can be fixed by, you could just have it on your phone. You could take a picture of it. You can whatever. It's not secure anymore. It's, the technology is far beyond it. They were going to be FOB cards similar to like you might get at a hotel. You touch the door and they go off. So we're not going to be using that technology part of it. But yeah, Crystal was able to make that change, and the vendors have been great.
Yes.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Will students have to pay for lost FOBs?
They will.
How much will they be charged?
Five dollars.
Seven dollars.
Seven dollars.
Cards are five, FOBs are seven.
So they'll get a new one. They'll get an initial one, just like safety glasses if they lose them or other things. And all that'll go through our new assistant principal. Josh Clark is going to be the one that's going to oversee that side of the house along with coordinating with central office. We'll be able to program them and reissue. They'll get it immediately, whether they pay it or not. We'll recoup the funds later on because students have to access all the buildings.
Will the ones that is lost be, can it somehow be deactivated?
If it's found, yeah, absolutely. So if it's lost, we're going to really encourage the students, don't worry about the money right now. Identify the fact that you lost it so we can disengage you from the system. If it ends up being found later, we're not going to charge them. And we can trade it back out. We can take the FOB back. Or we can just say, keep the one you got, and we can reprogram that one and make it to someone new.
So it won't compromise the security if it's lost and found or something? Great.
Terry?
Just the Apple storage contract is waiting for some material that he said the structural engineer ordered specified that is unique. Which, I don't really understand that. It just sounds like he's got other jobs he's not.
This is a real question. Do you have a vacation planned in a couple of months?
Nope.
You've got to keep him hanging, he's going to say retire. No, no vacation. That's the answer, is it?
Yep.
I'd also like to, this time, just take him in. Mr. Bianca, I have to say, is our savior all the way around, just like Tim. I mean, he is on every project in the school. He is the unsung hero behind the scenes. But every time somebody asks a question in a board of trustees meeting, he's got an answer. The other thing is in the committee meeting this afternoon, we participated with people that came in in a voluntary capacity to serve on this committee and started to fire questions at some of the vendors that we're working with. And Joe stepped up and neutralized that whole situation to make it palatable for the people that were here in a professional capacity that I felt that some of the volunteers were so out of line that I mentioned to them that I apologized that these people stepped up like they did. And I said, my horoscope this morning said about diplomacy. And I used every bit of strength to hold back and use diplomacy, not to go after them. But Joe, you handled 110% perfect. So when Andy keeps saying in every discussion, our administration team is the best, I'd like to give Joe a round of applause.
Yes, well done, Joe. That was fabulous. He was starting to get a little, a little beyond what should be.
So, your end?
So I have to admit, my first narrative, there is an error because I'm very happy to report that the governor signed the bill and that all school meals are free. So I put will not. So I certainly apologize for that error. Additionally, Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, the drinking matter program we have, Tim and I supplied them with the map of where all the drinking fountains are. Now we're waiting, we're back waiting for them to come back and work with us more. We have officially rolled out the new state conflict of interest. So we rolled it out to all 12-month employees. And then when all the teachers and parents and everybody come back, it'll be rolled out for them. This is managed through the state. So it's certainly, they manage it. So we kind of, we'll just have to roll it out and that's it. Just an update on the credit card status. I did reach out to the city treasurer. And the first initial response two months ago was that it had gotten declined, the request for an increase. So the treasurer was looking into that more than today. She said she's waiting for more information. So she's hoping there will be some.
The conflict of interest training, a definite improvement over the previous one, I think?
I believe so.
Yeah. I definitely want to know that. And so exciting that we are providing free lunches to students in the state. How much is that saving us in here?
Saving us in terms of?
Oh, it's not saving us anything because of the sustainability?
Correct. But we're able to, Heather's, you'll see when I request the contracts for the cafeteria, it's definitely increased because she has more, she's serving more students for breakfast and much. Any of the à la carte items, they do have to pay a charge. But at least we're not looking at students hanging out or challenging.
Yeah, that's awesome. That's so great.
Definitely is. So we're certainly, by the September report, September meeting, I'll be able to report on all of FY '23 once the city auditor rolls all of the balances. It's hard to believe that the year report is due on September 29th. So you just receive that from guessing and begin to communicate as soon as you can. And additionally, the invoices, just a reminder that the way the FY '23 was closed, was closed on July 6th, which did not give as a term for the vendor team who provides the invoices. So I'm hoping maybe next month might be the last month that we have invoices driven to have you approve them. So here is an updated copy of them with the accounts that will be pinned.
On sending districts and monies coming in, how was that?
Perfect. And it was received.
Okay, a new business. May I have a motion this second to approve for a discussion slash possible action vote to move to an electronic process of approval of warrants?
Can I just hear it? Second.
Is there any discussion? I'd like to make some. In regards to this, we thought of last month. And we went around the room and we talked about it. We didn't have some of the people in here tonight or in here then. I feel personally that when the job of trustees that the people were elected to fulfill, part of it was warrants in regards to in-person coming in to review and sign them. I still feel that way, and it's part of our job. I feel that on a fiduciary position that we are elected officials under the people and the citizens of our unit that have elected us expect us to do our job in regards to looking over these invoices. And if something flares up or is done wrong or there's a problem, the trustees are going to be looked at as the overseers of the school that we didn't do our job. I got a problem with that. And I know that you're trying to be expeditious in regards to time manner of getting the warrants signed on a timely fashion. And I know the world's changing in regards to the speed of light to get stuff done. Great, that works in some cases. I'm going back over 100 years when this school was founded by Oliver Smith, that the intention of the citizens of North Hampton in regards to overseers of the Oliver Smith will is that part of that position, that it says that every time we have a new school year that comes up, that I have to read the statement in regards to the Oliver Smith will. It states in there that the trustees that are elected by the citizens of North Hampton oversee the will. Part of the will is the management of the school. I'm the oldest trustee on the board right now. I've been on the board for 13 years. I have a very personal responsibility to the citizens of North Hampton and a very personal responsibility to the employees of the school and even more to the students and their parents. So in regards to, if you want to expedite this and everybody wants to vote on it tonight, I'm just putting down on my record that I voted no. Thanks.
Can I ask, since I was in here at the last meeting, could I just ask some clarifying questions? So this is just to, this is for signing warrants like MPS does or, you know, or like contracts that I sign on DAFU sign? Is that right? So is it any different than the paper copy you would get? Or is, I mean, I assume the warrant would provide all the information on the digital copies, right?
No. What you don't get from Mayor Gina is the backup. It's my understanding, correct?
We will not receive copies of the names.
We will not receive the backup, okay? All you'll get is the printout of what the vendor identification number, does it even have the vendor's name?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Vendor's name and amount. So you don't know what the money's being spent on.
It doesn't have a narrative or description?
It does have a small narrative, yes, it does.
Okay, so it tells you the vendor and the amount and then what the expenditure is for?
It's a small description.
Correct. Okay. So in the actual paper copy, there'd be like a scope of service or something else?
You'd get the actual invoice.
Right, but if the information's on the other?
There's an example. So culinary runs out of a bunch of ingredients. So they run a big Y. So the report would be big Y, the amount, the account number tied into culinary, and probably a short description, probably.
It's a description, yeah.
But it wouldn't be a box of salts and flour and sugar and milk. It wouldn't have all that.
I mean, I feel like one of the remarkable things that the pandemic brought us was allowing, you know, some things that always had to be signed in person to be able to be signed online. And I actually find that I can spend more time with digital documents than I, if someone puts me a stack of stuff in front of me and they're standing there, I, you know, there's a lot of pressure to read through all of those. I find it much harder to process that information than if I'm opening up a document, I can like scan things. And I find things all the time that I then ask questions about or ask for a revision on. And I find it actually a lot easier to do that digitally, you know, when I can than if I'm standing there and expected to process a whole chunk of things very quickly.
Can I ask a question regarding your tenure here? How long has it been?
January of the year.
Eight, nine?
Eight years.
Wow. So in those eight years, can you identify how many instances a trustee looking at the itemized receipts or the actual invoices has changed a warrant or changed the approval of a warrant? Like, I'm wondering how important the actual, like, so trustee looking at those, does it change the outcome? Has it changed in your eight years, does it ever change the outcome?
No, if anything, it just, I have vague lots of questions and I just haven't got the answers.
So I want to say one other thing, which is at the last meeting, I am definitely in favor of it. I think- I think that, you know, Crystal is our school business administrator, we've been hired to do her job and she's recommending this to us in the public school students, the city does it. But in the last month or so, I think Rick, you were kind of, so I got called a lot to come in and sign the warrants and so I'm feeling like if the two of you really, it's really important to you to sign the warrants and if the majority votes to do it in person that, you know, I don't, I don't want to have to be constantly asked. I'm working a lot, it's hard for me to stop what I'm doing and get over here and sign it.
But that's part of your job. Part of your job to come here and sign it.
And I'm having to do it electronically, I have an opportunity to do it electronically, which is, won't change my practice. I don't, when I come in to sign a warrant, I don't look through every single invoice. I'll scan exactly what's on the top, the description and...
If you want to call for a vote, we can do it, but I'd ask to have the poll.
Is there any more discussion on it? Does anyone want to say?
Well, I have something to say. I'm going to have to abstain at this point because I can't make the decision. Can I abstain? Can I do that?
Parade it, however you want.
So you can move forward and have a vote, but I will abstain. At this time.
Call for a vote, give a poll please.
Mr. Kehling?
No.
Dr. Spencer Robinson? Yes. Mr. Quadro?
Abstain.
Mayor Ciara?
Yes.
Dr. Vama?
Yes.
I'd like to ask one more question. Crystal, at any point if a trustee has questions about the warrants, it sounds like they will be sent to us electronically. If I want to see an itemized receipt for any, or the actual invoice for any warrant that we've approved, am I able to do that?
With you.
Can you keep these on file?
Correct.
I can come at any time and look through all of them.
Okay. Could I pose a question? Now that it's been approved, I just want to make sure, speaking on behalf of Crystal, the practice of this now, how the board recommend this practice move forward? So currently there's the requirement, past practice was two signatures, now that will be electronic. Does the board want to identify two trustees that this will be sent to for the two okays? Does the board prefer having this go out as we do with contracts? You get an email from me, I send it to all of you. Do you prefer that the warrant goes to all five of you and the first two that respond, that's considered approval? I think the board has to decide how it's, how it's carried through.
I will add to that conversation, discussion. I, I would suggest it goes to everybody and like Dr. Andy suggested, whoever responds the quickest, I guess approves it. And if anybody else has a question, they reach out to Crystal and say, hey, I want to see this one, can you provide more detail? I think that would work for me.
I like that idea also. Just for one more clarification, if I do receive two approvals and then someone after the fact requests a copy of an invoice, just know that that has already processed, gone through.
Yeah, it's just, it's just clarification.
Absolutely.
Like, you know, when I first started, I was asking questions all the time.
Absolutely.
And you said that you've never changed warrants because of questions about the invoice.
So when we, there's a process that we have in the business office to go through the warrants just before they come to me. Because then when they, after I assign them and as well as you, it goes down to the auditor's office, which they go through them as well.
Yeah. So the fact that it can be approved and somebody still may have questions, that hasn't...
Questions before we approve didn't change anything?
Correct. So probably won't happen.
Correct.
Okay, the next one, may I have a motion this second to approve payment of the FY '23 invoices listed in the financial report?
I'll move.
Second.
Discussion? Here is none, all in favor?
Aye.
They have a motion this second to approve to amend the '23-24 school calendar, the last day of school changed to June 13th, 2024.
So moved. Second.
Any discussions?
I'll just give the framework for the board. So this agenda item was placed on the, on the agenda because after the school calendar was approved that at springtime by the board, we realized and actually were notified because of MCAS, the MCAS days were modified slightly because of the presidential primary in April. We failed to recognize that and add it to the school calendar. So tonight's agenda was to add in the primary, March or April, whatever day it happens to be, which then from the board's perspective, it would push day number 180, the last day of school, to Thursday, June 13th. So that was the motion that you're looking for. Now, earlier today, I was informed that Northampton is not having a primary in September. We also, on the school calendar that was approved, we have a primary date already locked in in September where there's not going to be a school, a school day then. So I impose that to the board. We can keep the primary, the alleged primary day in September as a non-school day and then by adding the Super Tuesday primary in March to the school calendar, that would make the last day of school June 13th, and that's prior to any snow days. If the board wants to discuss and perhaps pull back the non-school day in September because there is no election, we can have a school day that day and then add the Super Tuesday day in March, then the last day of school would stay the same, it would be awash. It would still be Wednesday, the 12th at this point, again, or any snow days.
What is your preference?
Yeah, I'd have to defer to the leadership team.
I, I, speaking as an individual, I would say let's get rid of the day in September and keep the last day of school, but I do fear adults with families, I worry about the families and our students may have already made plans and, you know, that's my concern.
But they don't worry about that September day.
They do.
Sorry, ma'am.
They received this.
They should know the school calendar.
Most, are we unusual in having that day off, having school closed on that day?
Being an election site, polling site?
If, if schools are used for polling sites, it's a more common practice now to have no school to deal with school security. If towns don't use schools as a polling site, then there's no...
I'm just thinking like how much would we be in line with the sending districts' school calendars in terms of family claims that may...
Can we ask that school that day, right?
I think we do, I have to check that.
I was just going to ask, what's Northampton doing as far as their calendar?
Regardless of what's decided, how do we solve this for next time because that, whether there's going to be a primary or not, it can't be known until July, so...
So every couple of years it's going to be an issue?
Right. That always has been.
There's always been no school on preliminary day, even if there's no...
Well, I mean, if there was, you'd usually, has been a primary.
I would just keep it and be done with it. My opinion, I would just keep it and be done with it.
Do you have a preference, Joe?
I'm in line with Dr. Lincoln Hucker. I, I think Andy makes a fair point. I don't know what, medical appointments or other things people have scheduled in anticipation of that being an odd school day.
In big picture, I'm just looking at June, just to give the board a perspective of if we go to the 13th compared to the 12th. The 13th is a Thursday, we have to assume, living in New England, we're going to have a few snow days, most likely that, that's going to put us into the following week at some point. Now, following week, Wednesday is Juneteenth, so that would automatically be a non-school day then. But my point is, we have a buffer of five days or so that we can play with potential snow days. Then we get into the final week in June. That final week is our typical connecting for success conference for many of our teachers and administrators. It gets more hairy when we start getting into that final week in June. But at this point, even if we keep the September day as a non-school day, we add the new primary day in March, that means we finish up on June 13th and then we add snow days, we still have a week of a buffer before we're really stressing out.
Just for a point of information, so MPS is in session, that they were in session.
Was Unit D asked what they went for?
We just found out about this this afternoon, at three o'clock I think.
So maybe just, well, I guess we can't because we have a meeting now, but just to see if they have a strong preference one way or the other, the fact of that and the decision.
Well, Northampton Public Schools, it's a public school, I think we should have schools.
But they're saying they want to have to keep the day off.
No, I won't. Same way.
Because people aren't here for this.
I'd have to.
Yeah, we don't know.
Maybe in two years when we've done on the calendar, we could say if needed, people would know that it's not a good idea.
So I would advocate for leaving it to the administrative leadership team to decide and checking in with the, with Unit D first to see what teachers want.
If you can adjust that.
And then decide from there, just back then.
I agree.
I would ask for a motion of a vote to authorize, like, to...
Yeah, make a motion, author a super, I don't know, make a decision on the September 13th date, yes or no?
September 19th.
Nineteen.
September 19th.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there discussion here, Chair?
Just point of information for the board, that should include allowing Andy to designate the final day of school.
Yes.
Yes.
Sure.
It has to.
It has to, that falls under your purview, so it just, so that the motion has that.
Yes.
Right, that's a motion.
We better redefine the motion, Chairman.
You can take it as a...
Amendment to the motion, do you have that, Jim?
Okay.
Dr. Lincoln Hucker, will you let us know what you decide when you decide?
Definitely.
Right now, you just need a moment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. A motion this second to approve and amend policy IKF graduation requirements to increase graduation requirement credit to six, beginning in the class of 2027.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I think you want to hear from the principal.
Just if you have any questions on the document that I prepared, the vote, it really should be to increase it by six, not to six. It would go from 150 to 156 credits and that is to account for what has traditionally been the pre-explore exploratory time that didn't appear on a report card of transfer.
Do you want to just provide a little bit more context for the full board, specifically the policy, or a problem that's being addressed with the policy?
Sure. If you did have time to review the rationale that was sent out and you have any questions, I can answer those, but the, sort of the Cliff Notes version is that this is going to allow for that timeout to be graded. It will appear on the report card, it will appear on the transcript and that will allow students, there's a myriad of reasons that I listen to rationale, but I want to make sure that those students are, have that time accounted for as time on learning and that it's graded. We also don't want to, we also want to make sure that students aren't necessarily going to, in looking back at our data, most of the students are not going to be failing this. So not that it's a formality, but it's, it is a way to formally recognize that they did this time, that they passed it and that they will receive credit for it.
Question?
Yes, sir.
I was expecting you to say, possibly say, not taking the exploratory seriously and goofing off on some of them.
I think that's a byproduct of this. I think anytime that, anytime that you are going to be on record, that is definitely going to be a behavior management tool that the school can use and staff can use so they do take those opportunities more seriously. And I think a byproduct of that is by taking it more seriously, you may actually realize that you enjoy that area or like that area. Another big thing that I think is going to, to Dr. Spencer Robinson's point is, it's going to allow us to in real time through the rhetoric system, the parent portals and student portals for them to see how they're doing in those shops as they progress through them. And we're hoping that it's going to allow for better conversations out of our school counselor's office with parents and families around decision making and at home when they ultimately decide they're top four and then they're number one. Because they are going to be able to see, well, this is how you've been performing in there, are you sure this is really the shop that you're interested in or how do, why do you see yourself there if this is where you scored? So, and then ultimately, honestly, you know, sometimes Smith is not for everyone. This will allow us to really have those conversations earlier with students and families about their progress because we can, we have real data now about how they're performing on the vocational side of the house, which is the point of being here, so.
Right. The rationale is super detailed and appreciated. It does include the teacher perspective and I wonder if you could speak to a little bit, if teachers are seeing this as, as a little bit bonus where it increases their workload where now they've got to track student learning and understand a rubric and comply with it? Or are they supportive of this? And if so, why?
Yeah, a lot of instructors have been pushing for this for several years now with us, so we formed a committee using Perkins funds. It's kind of been something that we've done now for about five years, every year try to form a committee to look at something to improve or to fix a problem, come up with a solution for it. A lot of staff on the vocational side have looked at this and said, we really should be grading this, we really should be tracking this. Academic teachers have also stepped forward, there's been a lot of discussion with the academic department heads around incorporating a daily grade that mirrors the expectations on the vocational side of the house. So we formed a committee that had both vocational and academic teachers on it, as well as administrators and school counselor. And the hope is that the rubrics that are part of your cabinet, one was already created the year before when we reevaluate our existing rubric, which we did again this year. And our student services director, Rebecca Wanzig, is always part of that, looking at it, making sure that it's staying up to date with what our needs are and as well as a visa student. But, you know, hopeful was that we sort of packaged it in a different way where we kind of looked at the four Ps, preparedness, punctuality, participation, performance, and that, that's something that the academics can incorporate as their daily grade to look at also. So that was there. We've developed a system that I don't think is going to be onerous, they're already evaluating the students and looking at them. Anyway, I think if anything, this is going to help us move from an anecdotal idea of how students are doing to, to actual...
Data-driven.
Data-driven. And we're going to do it in a low-tech way that is going to allow for the teachers to be able to fill out the rubrics throughout the day, evaluate students, hand them in, and have the school counselors do the data entry and be the official teacher of record on their exploratory experience.
Yes, so I'm hearing you say it was really almost teacher-driven and you're responding to that interest in creating this really kind of systematic approach. I appreciate especially the, the line that you're, that this policy is walking where it's, it's pass fail, it doesn't count towards a GP, well, it just seems exactly right for an exploratory experience where this is going to count, this matters, your teachers are going to be looking at you, but it's not going to have long-term damage.
Thank you. May I have a motion this second to approve to surplus for, oh, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion this second to approve to surplus for donation of medical exam table in good working condition from the adult education program?
So moved. Second.
Further discussion, here is none, all in favor?
Aye.
And may I ask, are...
Presentation of the adjutant.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's a best.